This meeting will be speed. The mayor wasn't feeling very well today. She thought she would avoid giving everybody her illness, so I'm going to chair tonight's meeting. Is there any disclosure of pecuniary interest or genuine nature thereof? If not, we'll start. The first item that was on the agenda was public hearings. This public hearing has been deferred at the request of the applicant to November 12th. And the items on the agenda, Consent Agenda B01/19, B02/19, B03/19, and Application Number Z03/19 are all being deferred along with that. We apologize if anybody who came here just for this, it was sort of a last minute request by the applicant and we tried to notify people who would show an interest and posted it on the website there. So are there any delegations? None? Question period. None? Okay, so the Part 1 Consent Agenda, is there anything we want to have severed from the consent agenda?
I don't have anything to be severed, but there is a correction on the minutes. Do I put that now? Okay. Correction to the minutes, Item Q, Future Council and Committee Meetings. Deputy Mayor Bill Foster requested that we cancel the Public Service Meeting of October 1st. And it's showing in the minutes that the meeting was going on on October 1st, but we had canceled it.
Okay, so I'm going to go through that. So nothing being severed?
I've got a question for you, Logan.
Okay.
In the I-1, says recommendations regarding the Indigenous land acknowledgement. I saw a motion on that.
There is one, sort of a recommendation, be it resolved. I-1 is a motion, isn't it?
Okay, and it's just to... I think we should sever that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have the Consent Agenda here. Moved by Maureen, seconded by Heather, be resolved that Items F1 to K3 excluding I-1 contained in Part 1 of the Consent Agenda be adopted. So I'm going to go through, ask if there's any questions or comments relating to Item F adoption of the minutes, and we'll already catch something from that. Maureen, anything else? Okay, and that included F1 Regular Meaning, Meaning of Council September 24, Special Meaning of Council September 24. G, which is Board and Committee Report. G1, Community Services, the meeting of September 17. G2, Committee and the Whole Meeting of September 24. Anything on Item H? HI2, Recommendation Regarding North Shore and Search and Rescue Voluntary Rule. Anything relating to recommendations regarding the Subcommittee Report for Splashhead Office? Comments there? Item J, Bylaws and Resolution. J1, which is by law, to confirm the proceeding of Council Minutes of Meeting of September 24. J2, being a bylaw to execute a site agreement between the Town and CTV Limited Partnership. No comments there? K, Reports. The following reports are received. Potential Attempts Department Report for July to August 2019. Manitoulin, Surrey District Services Board Second Quarter 2019 Report. Board of Public Health, Surrey and District Meeting of September 19. So we'll read the resolution again. Be resolved that Items F1 to K3, exclusives of I-1, contained in Part 1 Consent Agenda be adopted. Any more comments or questions? All those in favor? Motion is carried.
Moving into regular agenda, Item I-1, moved by Council, candid, seconded by Councilor Sandra Hayden, be it resolved as recommended by the Community Services Committee. The council include an Indigenous land acknowledgement statement before council and committees. Of council meetings.
Does anybody got any comments?
I think Jill was very passionate about bringing this forward, so I think we should wait and have her. So presence, so we can speak.
Anybody else?
I would just like some information on this.
Okay.
I think this should, item should have come to council instead of Community Services, but nevertheless, it's here now. And what is the background on it? Where does it come from? How was it evolved? And what's the purpose of it?
Anybody else here wish to defer this decision for even more information, and Jill?
Yeah.
Okay, so if you have an agreement, we'll defer it. We wanted to find what additional information we went staff to provide.
What I said is, if anybody else has anything else, yeah.
We don't, do we any vote to defer that?
I would vote in for the engagement.
Okay, so.
I have one thing to add. What would be repercussions or consequences of accepting this motion? What would they be? I believe a couple of months ago, we got a letter from one of the First Nations. So I'd like to know what kind of an impact this would have on that letter we have gotten from them.
Anybody else have anything to add on that? I'd like legal ramifications, really what you're looking at for me.
We, the land acknowledgement is done absolutely every single day at school. We, and at every school in Northern Ontario, and I can speak to that because I hear it. And it's just acknowledging that we are on First Nations land. There's nothing else to it. And I think that we're honoring those people, especially when we're talking about reconciliation and what has gone on in the past. We have to deal with those consequences, and we need to honor the fact that this land was taken from them.
I certainly don't have a problem with it, but it is our duty and responsibility. Look at every item here. Think you can get caught by anything.
Do we want to have the wording of our suggested statement available for the meeting that we, next time we bring this up?
Yes, that would be good.
Would that be fair for staff to ensure that's on the agenda? So why don't we defer this to our next scheduled council meeting? Is that all right? Or will we just add that to the agenda?
As long as that's enough time for staff to be able to do that. I don't want to push, put too much pressure on them unnecessarily.
So we revise the motion here, or do we need a, we need to defer?
Just defer, it's hoped to defer.
We need an initial add there? Okay, okay, so all those in favor of deferring this? Hold up your hands, it's a little loud there, okay?
Next item, moved by Counselors Hayden, seconded by Counselor CTV, is resolved that the website redevelopment RFP be awarded to Sandbox Software Solutions.
Any comments on that? Maureen.
I looked over the proposal from two of them, and I found that Sandbox, I was impressed with their, their, what's the proper word, RPF. They are mobile friendly, they're looking at desktop, tablet, laptop, smartphone. I liked the fact that they were going to engage with different areas and staff. They were tailoring it to meet our needs. They weren't going to rush into doing it, they were, there's going to be surveys, there's going to be interactions with different groups. I felt that they were more interested in giving us a product that was going to meet our needs.
Anybody else have any comments or questions? I'd like to say that I'm in favor of this, but I think we should defer the actual implementation until we finish our strategic plan to make sure that we align the website to our Town strategic plan. And so we can give the approval tentative on slowing down the actual implementation until we develop the strategic plan. And Sandbox has commented on making sure that you align your website development with the Town strategic plan. Maureen.
When, where are we in our strategic plan? Like how far along are we? How much of a delay would we be looking at?
We are waiting for Landback to come back with the comments from the sessions that were held. And then I expect that within the next couple of weeks, when the community council report on that. I would think probably in the early years sometime, or maybe mid, I'm not really sure. Maybe you have a better idea. Like I'm thinking probably early spring, maybe we can do that. Oh, with the strategic plan, yeah, be a lot sooner. Oh, gosh.
So we're really domain, no, instead of saying we're going to start now, we defer for two to three months, and then then at least what they're going to do to develop and all the direction we'd like to take the town with the strategic plan. So we could still approve this, but we can direct staff to defer.
The start date, you mean? Okay, well, it's going to take about 29 weeks to develop, so, you know, that's like six, seven months?
Yeah.
So we'll vote on this motion, and we'll just vote on whether, or we'll decide whether or not we have direction, is that fair?
Like you're not, you're not voting to defer it right now, you're just voting to accept it.
Accept it, okay, and then then we can have a little discussion as to when we'd like to implement it. Okay, is that fair?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion here, moved by... Is that severed?
Yeah, probably. Can't read it this soon, it's mine.
Seconded by Ken, be resolved that the website redevelopment RPF award to Sandbox Software Solutions. All those in favor? Okay, and whether we defer or not, we want to discuss that right now, or it's going to be just, we could be it, or at the end of the meeting? I guess we can't discuss that now. Is anybody in favor of this deferring that, deferring the implementation until we have a better idea where we're going with the strategic plan? Ken?
I don't have a problem deferring this. This has some of it talked about for a few years, and once a few more months. If that was their suggestion to line this up with strategic plan, then I think we should.
Anybody else agree?
Well, they are able to go in there after they have provided us with the website, or is that what you're doing, providing us with a website, or?
It's a website redevelopment, so working with us.
Okay. Sure, so I mean, yeah, that could be added at any time, when it's, when it's completed. I don't know, for the, we set aside 25 grand for that, right? I see it's a little bit over though, by about 11 or so, but... Yeah, I was just thinking, I love.
I think that it's, I think it'd be okay to go ahead. It's going to take quite a bit of time for them to be able to start and working on this. Any of those changes that we want, that's going to align with the strategic plan, are easily implemented at a later date. Unless staff absolutely thinks that, I'm up to lunch, but I don't think that I am. I think that it's, we're better to get going at this. The sooner we get that, they're advertising our town better, in a better way, let's be honest, we should just say, there. But, you know, we need to, we need to keep moving forward with that, and I don't want to put us too far behind. It does take 29 weeks to implement. It's not something that's going to be done today or tomorrow. It's going to take quite a bit of time.
I kind of agree with Sandra. I don't really like to wait too long, it's going to take seven months. We could use this here webpage up now. It's going to take time.
Okay, well, we've got a general consensus here, not necessarily a retired consensus, but I'll live with that, okay? It is going to take time, right? And in the final analysis, we want to make sure this product is aligned with our strategic plan. Okay? So next item?
Moved by Counselor Hayden, seconded by Counselor CTV, be resolved that all reports, sorry, this came from a nervous motion from the last council meeting, be resolved that all reports to council limit the time period for background information to the current year and one prior calendar year, and furthermore, that staff be told of the time and resources required in preparing the report to ensure the best use of said time and resources.
You mean all reports, is this reports for the budgeting process?
No, it's like background information when we're looking at doing something. You know, we, we don't need to go four, five years back, just what we're doing now, maybe a year further back. That had nothing to do specifically with budgeting.
I'm just, I can ask for a little bit more clarification for that, because I'm not, I wasn't here and I missed the conversation. Why do you not want to see what the historical data is?
In my personal opinion, I look at what we have right now, and what we are proposing going further ahead. So the historical data, to me, is gone. And so we're looking at, what do we have? What are we looking at changing? What are we looking at in the future? The past is past.
Were you looking at something specific, or?
No, just that.
Maureen.
I think it is specific to a certain area that we're looking at at the time. I mean, staff understands that they may have to go in deeper to get us the information that we require. And I don't think, you're not saying not to do that, you're just saying, if it doesn't require it, why do it?
That's right.
I think that's where.
Oh, well, that's different. I didn't understand that from the way it's worded, that's not the way I understood it, so that's makes a little.
Yeah, I agree, this is, it looks like you're never going to go back a quick past year, and if you just spent $40,000 on a, let's say, a service review two years ago, or a year and a half ago, I think you're still going to pull that information up. Okay, so the question here is, when you, when you say all reports to council limit the time period, you're not going to pull up information that may have been paid for and, and very useful for something that goes back more than a year?
That's why it says furthermore, the staff will be cognit of the time and resources required in preparing the report to ensure the best use of said time and resources. So if the staff believes that getting more information is the best use of the time and resources, they would provide that. To me, that's, it's for discussion, whatever the majority feel.
I think they'll do that at any time anyway, right now.
I kind of agree.
So why put something in here that may be trying to handcuff them a little bit? I think, just my personal opinion, if staff feels that the people have proved to provide more information, or they don't need to, I think that's sort of their discretion right now.
Well, the motion can be defeated by a vote. We'll hear.
Anybody else have anything to comment here?
I think maybe sometime we are getting information that is a little longer than it really has to be, but I haven't seen that very often. And I think this is where Counselor Allenstein is going with that. And maybe, or maybe it just didn't seem pertinent to the actual items that we were probably contemplating. I don't know. What do you think? That's close?
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's why I worded it the way I did. Can we not add in that staff look back to the previous reports, like fiscal report, or like, you know, the main report, so that that's in there, that wording? Like if it's, if that would help the wording?
You're asking me, I think you should leave, you're asking me, I'm just offering my opinion.
Instead of going back 15 years, like five years?
Well, I think it should be up to staff to decide what they think is appropriate. Okay? That's just my personal opinion. Ken, you were going to?
I agree with that, in the sense that we're now trying to put boundaries on something that the staff does as a responsibility, their due diligence. And I don't know if it's confusing, I think it exists as it is, and also might limit council getting reported, saying, well, what about that service review you did in 2015? It might be pertinent, might not be pertinent, but we have to use that historical data for sure, in many cases, many items.
Okay, so I'll bring this to, read this again. Moved by Sandra, seconded by Ken, be resolved that all reports to council limit the time period for background information to the current year and one year prior calendar year. Furthermore, that staff be part of the time and resources required in preparing the report to make sure the best use of time. So all those in favor of the motion? All those against? Motion is defeated. Okay, this plan is correspondence for information only. Summer recreation, and we had correspondence on summer recreation opportunity programs. We had information that was previously circulated to council on the MAH correspondence around building code services transformation. There were renewal conferences and conventions. We're at mayor and council reports and announcements.
My. Thank you.
I have. So I attended the DSAB meeting on September 26th, and the full report is, it was in our package, but one of the highlights I wanted to bring attention to was part of the CAO overview from the DSAB report, and it reads the TSB 2019 second quarter unaudited financial report was presented to the board and projects a year-end municipal deficit of $302,947. This deficit includes Ontario Works forecasted to be under budget by $19,200. Children's Services is forecasted to be on budget. Social Housing is forecasted to be under budget by $220,300. Paramedic Services is forecasted to be over budget by $630,893. Interest revenue on the non-reserve accounts is forecasted to be at $88,743 surplus over budget. Also in there, there was a motion on the, I believe it was the Public Health Board Minutes, page 56. And part of our meeting that we had with Fred Dean, he was talking about when we come out of camera, there should be a motion about it. And when I read this, I'm simply putting it out there as how they did the motion. So they come out of camera and they said, this board approves the meeting notes of the date, board in-camera meeting, and that these remain confidential and restricted from public disclosure in accordance with exemptions provided in the Municipal Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act. So I thought that that was something that was pretty good, that we should maybe consider putting in our procedural bylaw for when we come out of in-camera motions. The only other thing that I have is, to me, we're taking an awful long time to finish the procedural bylaw, and I was wondering what the majority of council thought to having three or four hours set aside so we could try to go from where we left off at 6.2.1, page 19, to the very end of schedule H, page 45.
Right now, we're planning to bring that forward at the end of our next council meeting, which is two weeks' time.
To finish our review of it? So are we going to have more time before the next council meeting?
It'll be after, after the council meeting, so we can carry it on. Last time we had, what, about two hours, I think, or an hour? Just a little. Two hours, and we ran into the council meeting, so.
Okay, that's good, thank you very much. That's all I had.
Ken?
Nothing, Mr. Chair.
Sandra?
Nothing.
I've got two items to talk about. We're going to have a budget meeting to give staff an idea what our expectations are for the budget, okay? In the budget planning process. Do we, would we like to have a separate meeting to handle that? Next meeting, we've got an in-camera before the budget meeting, or before the council meeting, we have a council meeting and we have the committee as a whole to do the procedural bylaw.
Yes.
Would we like to have a separate meeting to discuss this portion?
Yeah, the budget, yes, I think so.
How does everybody feel about that? I thought C.S.C.R.
Absolutely. I mean, we've got a lot there.
Okay, we'll try to pick what day of the week, a Tuesday, if we can, maybe next Tuesday? Okay?
I can't do Tuesday.
Any other day you can't do?
Can we, can we leave it on the staff to sort of sort out our schedules and set out a tentative date and we'll try to establish something, okay? Is that fair?
Yeah.
Okay. The second item I have is a Huron Central Railway. Huron Central Railway announced that they are going to be closing down, that's the second time they've announced this. Last year, they were, they were given a year's reprieve by provincial government, it provided some funding. And up until recently, it appeared that everything was a goal to keep, to provide longer-term financing for that railroad. There was an expectation that there was going to be announcement before, before the election to, to say that, and it hasn't happened. So they've announced this. This means, their announcement was they would shut down early next year. That really means probably towards the end. That really means probably towards the end of the first quarter of next year, okay? So that still provides some time for some action, okay? I traveled down to the Sioux on Monday to talk with other members of the task force. And we composed a letter that went out to everybody in all the writings associated with the railway, okay? And we've asked every candidate to respond on what they would do if they were being elected. And that is going to be posted, made public, okay? Whether they respond or not. So we're going to try, we're trying to provide. Create some political pressure and some commitments, okay? Before the election year, while, while things are hot. I just saw a report that came through, and I think we all got a copy of it, which is advancing Canadian competitiveness using short rail. And this is not a problem that is. Just for, for our area. It's a problem that's affecting other short line railroads in Canada. And the Congress, Chamber of Commerce, there's Regina, Peterborough, and I think it was Halifax or Cape Breton. Recommended that the federal government create an infrastructure fund to provide maintenance for these short, short run railways. The issue was, is that the rail provides competitive transportation rates for Donald Tower, or ECON? And for the steel mill in the Sioux. If they ever develop the ring of fire, there's a potential to be able to use this railway to transport iron ore, not iron ore, but nickel. Or to refineries and refineries in the summary area. And. The continued life of that railway, it really opens up the possibility of future development in the north. But eliminating it eliminates a fair bit of potential for economic development. I was just wondering if whether or not we'd like to issue a statement, have the mayor, or somebody to develop a statement that we can post maybe on our website, there, send us. One handed, Ray?
I, I would imagine we should, yes. Because I mean, it's for safety of the roads and so on and so forth. I mean, the government does help the transportation industry. I think they could help the railway as well. And I know they do, but I mean, they might have to help them just a little bit more so we can keep, you know, a little more trucks off the road.
A consensus that we at least do something, I believe, right now? Okay? It's allowed to be a general direction to staff to try to develop something for that issue. And I don't have anything else. So we have a motion to. Moved by Sandra, seconded by Ken, be resolved at seven thirty two, the regular meeting council with your bychair, all those in favor?